Six thirty, we'll call the special work session of the City Council of Little Falls on October third, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Public forum. Individuals may address the City Council about items on the agenda or not included on the agenda. Speakers are required to state their name and address for the council record and limit their remarks to three minutes or fewer. Speakers are requested to frame their comments around items that fall within the authority of the City Council. Generally, the City Council will not take official action on the items discussed at this time, but may place the item on file, take the matter under advisement, refer the matter to staff or committee for future report, or direct the matter to be placed on an upcoming agenda. Would anyone like to speak? Would anyone like to speak? Third and final call, would anyone like to speak? None, we'll move on to the bills. Does anyone have any questions on the bills? Consent agenda items. Any questions on the consent agenda? In short, there were only three this week. Council information only items. Enterprise fleet agreements, review, City Administrator.
Thank you, Council President. In the time since our last meeting, we haven't had a chance to review the agreements with our City Attorney, and Alyssa is on the call tonight. We spoke earlier today, I think everything that, of all the agreements that Enterprise had, we have clarity on, on everything, except for the piece of selling vehicles that we already own. So, however, with that, there, we're going to add an addendum to that, and Alyssa, you can describe this more thoroughly for the council on how we want to proceed with that, so that we follow our process and be able to still utilize Enterprise to sell those vehicles on our behalf to try to acquire the best purchase price for them.
Alyssa?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
We can hear you now.
Sorry about that. It's my microphone on, maybe. So, a quick update on this. So, basically, there will be some standard cases that they've been theory approved to, they have gotten back to me with the specifics of what they would look like. But in essence, the, and this is all with the consignment assignment, bring it out in a second, but the sourceful documents, the standard ones, all of you know, are, are done fairly well, and have all of the provisions that are needed for Minnesota municipal contracts. But the, this is considered to be basically the subcontract, and so while technically anything that is in this, in these agreements that conflicts, goes to whatever is in the sourceful contract. When I spoke with Scott from Thor's Well, he suggested that we should make sure that things like the, the practices, provisions, the venue, those types of things were all actually written out. So, like I said, I'm just waiting to hear back from them with the way that they want that, if they want it in the bright line or something else. When it comes to the consignment and assignment agreements, and those are the ones that specifically have to do with the sale of the customer-owned vehicles. So this is for the sale of the ones that are, that the city currently owns. There will need to be a slight change made in the, in the ordinances for the city to allow those to move forward. Under the current ordinance, the City Council has to declare a piece of chattel of property to be surplus, which is still what happens. The trick comes then with the next step. Under the ordinance, chattel over a thousand dollars is supposed to be specifically put up for public auction, and a number, an official notice of that public auction to be published in the official newspaper. Now, looking at the charter, the charter only requires there to be a declaration that it is surplus, and then for the council to instruct the city to move forward with whatever notice it deemed prudent. And so, the next time we see you, we will be asking you to hopefully approve the ordinance that would deem it prudent in cases of motor vehicles, to notify the, notify the public that a third-party broker, and the identity of that third-party broker, who that is, at the time that you declare it surplus. That would then allow these agreements, not only those two, is specific to be signed, but also for the city to move forward with using brokers for other vehicle sales, which quite frankly is, is going to be a net positive as far as income to the city, since the ability of the, you're going to end up likely getting better prices if you have more options available than just having to have it at public auction. So, with that, are there any questions?
Yeah, Madam President, Ms. Harrington, so are you, are, should...
Maybe, no, it's off, no.
You were off.
No, it's off.
Ms. Harrington, so my question is, are, is, should we be waiting until that ordinance is, is approved before voting for this, or is that not going to be a question?
Madam, the council members, the, it is always up to the council, but at this point, the council could go ahead and make a, a motion to have and authorize the following, the agreements with the exception of the, the assignment and consignment agreements upon City Attorney's approval, which would take care of those items I mentioned. And then, you could authorize the others pursuant to a, a changing ordinance, or you could bring those two specific ones up later. I know about it is important in a, for time to get the others signed as soon as possible, simply due to the timelines involved in purchasing the vehicles. And so, our recommendation would be to, as I said, have, separate those two agreements, the, the consignment, one, assignment, the consignment agreement out, and then approve the others, as I said, pursuant to City Attorney's approval.
And, Council President, I, I believe that it would be prudent to proceed with these and, and forego, or with the caveats or with the order, direction of our City Attorney. Before we would start on the ordinance, because if we didn't pass this agreement tonight, then changing the ordinance wouldn't be as necessary. We would follow the same protocols that we would, we would typically follow. Now, even if we didn't do this, we'd still probably want to consider changing that ordinance to allow us to open the door for more opportunities for, for sales, to get the best price for the, the vehicles anyways. However, I think the following order would be, would be fine. The timeliness of selling the vehicles isn't the problem. I mean, the vehicles even through, sailed through, even if they were sold through Enterprise isn't going to happen immediately anyways, and we're not going to sell the vehicles until we have their replacements available to us and, and in working order. So, that ordinance process, you know, being two weeks from now to introduce, and then the minimum ten days, so, you know, we'd be three weeks out. I think there's a fifth Monday in October this month. So, we wouldn't be passing that final ordinance until November. I don't foresee us running into any problems having to wait that long on the sale of the vehicles.
Madam President, it was only, I went out and checked a place that has Enterprise as their vendor, and there was only a couple gripes they had. One was in the consignment area. They have a number of vehicles that are out of commission now, and they've been sitting there for over a year. I would like to see that there is some kind of a date, three months or whatever, because to have a bunch of derelict vehicles sitting there, they don't even comply with the city vote now, because they're no longer insured, they're no longer plated.
Sure.
And I'll talk about the rest of it, because it doesn't pertain to what we're discussing right now, agreement review, but when we get to the point to vote it in, I'll bring up something else. Alyssa, if you want to hear it out.
I think now is a good time to hear those items, especially in the work session. You can certainly bring them up again in the regular...
The other gripe I was hearing was the regular maintenance is supposed to happen at certain times, and they're supposed to be on top of this. The company I went and checked, they haven't followed through on that, so they've been having to set up their own maintenance schedules, even though Enterprise is supposed to be doing it. So I would like to see that in there, that they have to abide by that and actually follow through. But otherwise, because one of the perks of having Enterprise is it free up our staff from always checking which vehicles need to be maintained at what time or serviced, and if that's part of Enterprise's agreement, I think it'd be nice to see that carried out.
Okay.
That's the only two things. Otherwise, it seems vehicles show up when they need them, so.
Council President, my, in our discussion, I was under the, the perspective that we would still be in, responsible for at least taking the vehicles in, scheduling the maintenance, getting those there. We would have access to the same software and platform that they're using to track all of the maintenance as it's happening, and then, you know, knowing when to take the vehicles in for their scheduled maintenance. So we would still have that, and they, they do have local dealers and mechanics that they, shops that they work with, that, that they're registered under, to, to have, so we could take it into one of those. They, all the maintenance records get logged into the systems, so we have access to, to see what has been done on those vehicles. I, I still think it was our responsibility to take them in as we normally do.
General maintenance.
Yeah, for the general maintenance, repairs.
But you'd use their program, which would be a little easier.
Yes, and it would be a program. We don't currently have a software program. It's all manual logs and, or whatever department heads remember to take the vehicles in, or whatever sticker is in the window, you know, for some of the, you know, less, less used vehicles. So, I don't know, for, you know, Greg, you can certainly speak to how PD sends their vehicles in for the regular maintenance, or...
Yeah. Jim?
For our maintenance, we have sergeants that monitor the mileage on the vehicles, and we have a, a daily maintenance sheet. If they're, the officers will do a log, complete that log, if there's any maintenance due on the vehicle, if there are any lights on, you know, requiring maintenance. So that's how we track it, and it's my understanding that with the shops under the lease agreement, if there's any more, anything more than just general maintenance, tires and oil changes, that type of thing, that shop will then communicate with Enterprise to get the repair authorized. Once it's authorized, they'll, they'll do the maintenance.
So I don't know if there's, if that's what they're referring to, in, in making sure those authorizations are, are timely, I guess. But, yeah, we're, we're still going to be taking them in as, as...
We still have to monitor and stay on top of it.
And I, I believe the web access and their software programs are really what we get access to, and that alone should make things a little easier, or at least more transparent for us to, to look at versus, you know, individual logs for every, all vehicles. We'd see, we could see them all together.
It'd be nice if you could see just how many miles are on the vehicle on that, so you know what's due for a maintenance versus running out there and trying to periodically check them and...
I believe that's the case, too, and the, with the WEX fuel cards, having the, those available, or utilizing the ones through Enterprise, because then that WEX gets tied into that ma, that log as well. And the, and the WEX is where you're really getting the access to all the mileage, because every time the vehicles get filled, they have to report the mileage on their, on vehicles.
I, I had a fleet vehicle many years with a different company, same thing, you had to punch in the mileage, and when it was due for a service, a little different here, because I wasn't assigned to operator, I was assigned, it was my car, right? I would get an email saying, hey, this thing is getting close to service, and then when it goes over, then they come much more frequently.
So, yeah, I, I, I think, though, from what we've understood and been presented on that program, I think there is still responsibilities that we make, and it will be helpful, but I think on that front, I think we're, we still will know, but we'll have much, you know, more thorough, detailed analysis that any more people can access to that, you know, that, those logs and records.
For the law enforcement vehicles, we're required to maintain a maintenance log on the vehicles anyway, so that becomes very helpful for, for our vehicles.
I didn't know if the city required that, as far as city vehicles, if they log in, how many miles, what they're using it for.
And we, and we do have that, but I, I think our system is just through WEX, so that's all we're seeing now. We're not seeing our, our maintenance logs recorded into that vi, individual vehicle. We're just seeing the, the fuel usage and consumption and, you know, and those mileage, because WEX does have an online portal that we can access. But not every employee has that. It's only some of the finance staff, I believe, that, that even have the access to the, to the fuel cards.
So, would this work be done locally, then?
Yes.
Like, Randall or someplace?
Yep, there's, there are three, when we had our presentation, there were three local vendors that were all Little Falls area.
Good, good. Anything else? Okay, childcare facility, John.
Thank you, Council President. You've, we've had conversations about our grant through HUD on the childcare issue. I've given you, Council members, so, in my updates over the last couple of months, status on our conversation that we've had with the school district. It was, you know, formally announced at the school board meeting last, on the nineteenth, that they are, you know, going to talk about at the upcoming school board retreat and go more in-depth, and answer questions upon what we've, what we've discussed. So, you know, it's certainly, I think now is a good time for us to address that and talk, kind of talk about some of the updates and next steps that we need to, to proceed. So, through the requirements from HUD, we do need to complete a number of things before the end of the year to be able to even receive the grant funds. And that's why we haven't moved forward on that, because we wanted to make sure and vet out the plans with the school district and make sure that those were viable. The two biggest elements that, with that planning that we needed to do were in the project, developing the project narrative and the project budget. So that's going to, we need to have that submitted into HUD so that they know what we're using the money for, whether it aligns with what we can use that funding for. We do have, I, I went through a webinar as well, I think you were even a part of that, on uses of the funds. We believe that this is eligible, this will, this will be valid use of the dollars, and that that will be approved. That, one of the elements tonight that we need approval on is, in addition to that, is the project environmental review. So, the location of the site needed to be determined, and with the school board, you know, agreeing that they want to move forward with the, continue moving forward with this exploration, we will ask that we approve the, the environmental review tonight. Recommendation is through Landmark Environmental, and they will have that part, start that work and have that completed, hopefully in about six weeks. So that's a, another critical element into that work that needs to be done with HUD. Then the rest are just some forms that we have to, to submit and complete. So we will, we will be working on that and addressing that, and having those elements turned in before the end of the year. So we really needed to vet and make sure if the school was going to move forward with this, as they have, have at this point indicated that they were, so that we can, you know, craft all those project narratives, develop those project budgets, spend that time and energy on doing that work versus if that isn't going to happen, then we go back to the things that we were discussing for, you know, over the course of probably the last year, where we would have to, you know, likely build something that would be a hybrid model. In this instance, this is not a hybrid model. This is going to be a, would be a childcare center. It would be leveraging our one point five million dollars of the grant for the construction of the facility with a match from the school district of at least one point five million, so that they could develop the facility that was at, at least three million dollars, so that they could have a childcare spot that, like, a childcare center that the school district would actually own and operate. And we do believe that their ownership does, does comply with rule, we don't have to own it. They would, they would own it and operate it. They do ask that we develop and approve a additional support, because they have worked through the financials of this, and as we, you know, learned earlier, last month, I believe, or August, when Big Adventures sold, need to be, and we gave the grant to help facilitate that, and we certainly want Big Adventures to be successful as well, because we know the need is so great. We need this childcare center, Big Adventure Childcare Center, additional family childhood providers that are working in their home or other locations to, to meet our needs, because, I mean, we're talking hundreds of kids just in our city that could utilize childcare slots. That those, all of those elements are needed together. Like, we need every single piece of this, and we, we want them to be successful. We know in those transitions in early stages, it can be difficult, and it can, the financial numbers don't, don't line up. That's what we learned with Big, Big Adventures and their transition. That's what I've learned with many of the additional providers. I've seen proposals for new startup childcare centers many times over the last six years, and every single one of them, I can tell you this, is that in the first year, second year, they have a really hard time making money. They actually don't. They're not profitable. In this instance, even with the school district, they're not profitable. I've had, I've seen this in a previous, in my previous community. They, after I left, they actually, the community came together, started a childcare center and found an operator. In the first two years there, they had a hard time with startup, and then went back to the city and asked for more money, and asked for more money. The first, after, and after three years, they were, you know, like, how much more money are we going to give? And they had to do some financial analysis and restructure things to make it work, but they, they, they since found it to work. So instead of waiting until, you know, it's too late, or it's after the fact, let's at least be on proactive and, and forthright to know that there may be additional money to help offset some operating losses in the early years, but we want these to be sustainable, and we don't want the early struggles financially to impact the long-term struggles, or the long-term viability, financial viability, sustainability of a childcare center moving forward. So as I said, like with Big Adventures, part of the agreement is that the city would be able to support some of that, offset some of that cost. I believe the use of the ARP funds, American Rescue Plan dollars, we have funding available. We've used it already for once for a childcare center. I believe we would be following the same product, you know, standard and precedent that we set for, for that model, that we would pledge that we would have up to two hundred thousand dollars available for the school if they're, they would have challenges with that first year operating. The school additionally has plans to match that and, and cover that. They are also covering all the staff costs and operating costs and everything else in the building, so, you know, we're, you know, not, in the long term, even if we owned a facility that we're using as a hybrid model, we're still owning it, we're still carrying a lot of costs on that. I don't know what those costs would be. We would have, you know, costs to the city moving forward, even if we're sustaining that model. So if you're thinking about it in terms of, wow, that's a lot of money to give to the school, well, if we're only talking about what we need upfront to get them going and have them sustain, so that they don't have to come back and ask us again, I think that's a good investment, making sure that things get started, just as we did with one childcare center already in our community. And as I really also hope that we can find a program and ways to dra, create something to help startups for additional childcare centers, as well as current providers that are operating that need some resources to help them in case they need new cribs or new equipment or something else, that they would have an access to a, a grant, and we can use ARPA dollars to, to help finance that. We certainly have, at this point, we have not allocated all of them, we have resources available to us to, to do that, and I think for the needs that we're facing, especially in the growing demand that we're going to have on workforce, we do know that one of the barriers to workforce in our community is access to childcare. Certainly was the case in my own experiences. That was, you know, not that in my household, we needed both parents to be working, but at the times when we didn't have access to childcare, both parents couldn't be working. And in our community, that, we know that, we've heard that, we've heard that through the workforce center, that that's a, that's certainly a case. So I understand that with this, it's a lot to unpack, that, hey, you know, these things seem like they're coming out of nowhere. You've had updates that these conversations have been hap, happening. I hope that I've kept you in the loop on that. If you have questions, these are the times to ask them. This is, you know, this is the situation, because in two weeks, we will have a joint resolution that's been drafted, I'll be sending that out to you, just got it back from the school's comments today. I'll be sending that out to you this week for you to review as well. And that, come the seventeenth, we form, make it official, and then we finalize the, the grant request dollars. So if there's concerns, if there's questions, if there's comments, please, this is the time that we need to make them.
We have one.
Yes, sir.
What age group does, does take in, all the way from infant?
Zero to preschool age.
Okay.
Yeah, there, we, in our, in our, yeah, one, one quick, in our conversations with the school district, we, we requested that they have at least ten infant slots available.
Okay, because that's the group we really have to target.
Madam President, if I could, in, in my mind, yeah, I've been part of the discussions, and I think this is an amazing opportunity for our community. I think it's a great opportunity for our west side to have that facility over there. And they were even talking about the possibility of, of using students almost like OJ, on-the-job training, not only at this facility, but offering it out potentially to other daycare facilities, so. And once again, I go back to that day when we met with Congressman Staubert, and this opportunity affords itself probably once in a lifetime. I don't know if we're the only one in the state. That's what Isaac Schultz told me when I met with him Friday night. So this opportunity, and, and what scares me about it is that we have to partner with somebody when you get one point five million. It's kind of scary, because what are all the other communities going to do that didn't get this one point five million? So I think it's a opportunity we have to seize, and it's just investing in our community.
Yeah, Madam President, there's, I got a lot of questions on this whole, this whole thing, but the first one I want to know upfront is, if we approve this environmental assessment, is that assessment going to be based entirely upon partnering, partnering with the school district?
We have to indicate the area in which it's going to be. We can't just have an environmental, we, we're not giving them other options of sites for environmental assessments. So it, it is based on us moving forward with the school district.
So if we approve the environmental study, it's pretty much saying that we're going to partner with the school district? to partner with the school district? Because here's, here's the problem I have, I have with the whole partnering with the school district. I, I don't think it's, the problem I have is I don't want to try to solve one problem and create two or three other problems down the road. Talking with some of these childcare, private childcare providers, if we're, if we're going to work in that younger group age, when, when a child, when a private childcare provider gets their license and say they get a license for 12 children, they're, they got to block a certain block of that, that 12 children in this ages. Now, if they lose these, these pre, or zero to four-year-olds, they can't, they can't come in and bring in five and six-year-olds to replace them. They could lose that money and they could go out of business. So how, how by creating, and then we're using two forms of taxpayer money, one with the school district, one with the million and a half that we're getting, partnering them together, how, that to me, that's counterproductive to doing what we want to do with our, with our private childcare providers.
Councilmember Starley, the, the numbers of deficit, the deficit numbers that we have in our community were 200 spots. What we're talking about in this facility is potentially 77 to 110. It depends on the, the sizes of the facility that they construct because how many spots you can have is determinant to the square footage of what your, your room spaces are. So there's way more need for childcare spots than there would be created in this endeavor if we were, if, if this is to go through. So for the fact for any startup childcare provider, any existing childcare provider, they're not going to be losing kids, they're not, that they can't otherwise fill. The, the need is too great. There are too many, there's so much demand for this, for those four spots regardless of the age group for other than once you get into actually later preschool and school-aged are, are, there aren't needs for that. There's already great programs available through, both through the means of the school and Boys and Girls Cup and others that those don't tend to be a solution or those don't tend to be used, daycare providers to use those. But infant care, toddler care and that, you know, three to four-year-old age group, those, those are, there are demand for that. And there, that, that goes way beyond what we're trying to do.
Why is this such a concern with the private childcare providers and why, why are they really concerned with this? If it's not a problem, why are they concerned with it?
I think they're looking that, they don't realize the size of this and what the demand is yet.
I.
It's because there is a big demand for early child, I mean infants in that age group that even this facility isn't going to fulfill.
If we, if, so even, even, okay, so even if we went back to, we're going to, we're going to build a cent, we're going to build the building and we're going to use light, private operators to operate out of it. We're going to create new spots. We're, we're going to create competition. Now, we've given that, those providers an opportunity to do something that other providers couldn't do. And so what I'm saying is we still use other money to support the providers and make sure that they are, they're not disadvantaged and that they have opportunities to, to cover things that they need to make sure that they can operate. There's, there's ones that need support and I need to update some things in my house and I need $10,000 to do that so that I can get my license and, and operate. We should be on the forefront to, to supporting them and doing that work. That we're, we have to use this money to create something for childcare. We're going to create more spots. Like if, going back to it, regardless if we're doing it with the school, if we're doing it on our own, we're going to create that, a feeling that, oh, there's more spots being created and it's being created with taxpayer dollars. Some people just have a sentiment that that's a, that's not the right thing to do. Unfortunately, from everything that I've been through for seven years with this community has started from day one when I started here because I couldn't move here with my entire family because we didn't have a spot for childcare. I have talked to providers, I have talked to the licensers, I've talked to the school, I've talked to everybody and anybody. I've testified at the, at the state many times on this issue. Every conversation I've had with providers, yes, there's concerns about the public coming in and operating a center and I have that concern as well. And I've had that conversation, the mayor knows it, he's been in that room and we've talked about that if we do this, we know that this is going to be a sensitive issue. So you need to be prepared for that and how you're going to operate it and making sure that you're fair, you're operating in a fair and competitive way with everybody in the private sector. But to be concerned that you're going to lose spots to, to the school and that you're not going to be able to replace them, I think is completely unfounded and that has not been expressed to me from any of the providers. It's the fact that staffing for centers is really difficult as well. And the Initiative Foundation has been working on programs and the school district, as the mayor said, is talking about creating on-the-job training so that they can have students working to get their CDAs and have that right out of high school. And I've directed them that if you do this, you make sure that it's available to everybody in the, in the community, that you make sure that they have access to it too and that you advantage them more than you're advantaging yourself. But this is a chance to use these dollars in a way that's going to make an impact. It's not going to solve the problem. The problem's still going to be there, but it's going to be a much smaller one.
Madam President, if I could, I would guess that almost every community in greater Minnesota would love to have gotten that 1.5 million dollars because that's all you hear is the need for childcare throughout greater Minnesota, every community. The other thing is Cam Ripley has expressed the need for childcare. And a couple of the things with this property, of course, is they have food service right there.
Yeah.
That's why it's a good reason to partner with them because they can just transition it right over to the childcare and they also have the property that is part of the deal. So with that 1.5 million, I don't think we could do something on our own that would suffice to the amount of spots that we need in this community. I've even talked with the mayor of Pierce and he said that, you know, they need childcare over there also. And if, if we had extra, they would come over here to try to get it. It's, it's a county situation. So I think we're very fortunate that we got this 1.5 million offered to us because otherwise we'd be spinning our wheels for another seven to 10 years.
Madam President, I, I totally agree. I know there's a problem with childcare, but I'm not, I, I don't, I don't see how... The problem I have is partnering with another partnership like that when they don't have, they're not going to have the, the requirements and the regulations that a private provider has.
No, no. Council President may, Council President may interrupt because I actually do know the fact of this.
I just talk to somebody with the continuing education requirements that the childcare providers have.
Stop, stop, stop.
Sorry. I apologize for...
This is an open environment. That's what this is about. That's what he asked for, was discussing this. So to tell me to stop, I don't understand because I'm talking with childcare providers and the problem, and the issues that they have. That's, that's what I'm bringing here. This isn't me personally, okay? I'm bringing a concern that they have. So maybe a way to do this would be for you to get out with them childcare providers and, and set up something where they can meet. I don't know.
Councilman Starley, I think that you can safely go to all of these childcare providers and assure them that the new childcare facility will have the same rules and regulations that they have. You can also assure them that we need 200 spots, but we're only building 75 to 100. So there will be no shortage and it will not be any threat to their businesses.
What if it does though?
It won't.
How can you guarantee that? You can't guarantee that.
Because we need...
Will we put it in the, will we put it in the agreement that the, the school district can't take any of these children from a private provider? Will, will that be in there? So they, they'll guarantee, be guaranteed they won't lose a, a child to, to the school district? Will that be in there?
Do we do that when we bring businesses into town that guarantee that they're not going to take them?
But we're, I'm trying to protect what we have. I'm trying to speak for the people that are, that aren't here. That's, I, I understand the problem. I know we have an issue. I just don't know, I, I, I'm not sure this is the right way to go about it though. That's, that's, that's...
That's what we're doing as we're discussing. It's, it's good to hear both sides and, and I'd like to chime in with, with our mayor. Holyford School had a program through the home ec department where it was childcare class and the kids receive credit and you have to abide by state, anything you do through the school. They understand these regulations just as much or more so than a private provider. And these programs work there. They had kids coming in and I also saw students going from there, opening up their own daycares after that because they had the experience, they had the understanding, they took the courses and everything worked out well there. I didn't see any problem. I think working with the school system is a good idea because that is the age group we're dealing with, you know? And they understand more about what the state mandate, mandates as far as regulations than anyone else because they have to abide by every one of them laws all the time. So I think it's a good agreement personally.
Well, I, I'll look at it as we move along. I'm just given some concern that I, has been brought to my attention and, and I hopefully we can address it and resolve it as we move along.
Okay.
I just, I just don't want to approve $5,100 for something I might not agree with as we go along. That's...
Let me, let, Council President, if I may, the, for $5,100, if we had to amend the agreement and find another location to do the environmental assessment on, I believe that would still be available to us to do. If that's, if that is a concern of yours, the, the environmental review has to be completed. We get no money if we don't do an environmental review. So we better approve $5,100 and get that started because that's going to take six weeks. We're already at October 30th.
As long as it doesn't bind...
If we wait any longer on that, we're, we're running up in the end of the year.
As long as it doesn't bind us into something else.
So...
If I may, I would just like, I'm, I'm in favor of partnering, partnering with the school because we, we have the grant money. It's, it's awarded. We have it. So by partnering with the school district, they're going to, we're going to get more of a facility than we would striking out on our own. No land acquisition, plus they're kicking in. And the part that I find most attractive is they're assuming ownership and operation. We're not saddled with that in perpetuity. And so I, and I get the potential for participation in startup and stuff, but in the grand scheme of things, that's going to be nominal compared to owning a standalone building for the rest of time. We have staff, we'd have to, we would have to clean it, have somebody there, you know, opening, monitoring, maintenance, all, all of that. Here, it's, it's a grant. It's not the city budget, partnering with them and they take it over. It, it, it's not a anchor tied around our waist for the rest of time.
Anything else, John?
I just clarified that we're talking about the, a property right adjacent to Lincoln Elementary. I don't think I mentioned that in my first opening discussions. Looking at adjoining it with the early childhood facility that's over there as well, the childcare centers, all childcare centers, whether operated in, in schools by schools, private providers, nonprofit providers are licensed by the Department of Health at the state. That's a requirement. So they're all following the same rules on childcare centers. Family licensed childcare that in Morrison County is done through Sourcewell. The county contracts with Sourcewell to provide the licensing for it. So I just want to make sure that those items are noted.
Which property adjacent to the school is it?
South, on the southwest corner. So third and eighth.
Okay.
Okay, item C, mayor and city council wages discussion, mayor Zilka and/or city administrator.
I just asked to bring it to the table. This is a year where if we want to do anything, we could. I'm not a strong proponent, you know, I'm not going to stand up on top and pound my fist saying we need a raise. Frank, I don't know when the last one was. I know you've mentioned it before.
We actually, we lowered our wage once a while back and I don't think we recouped it all the way, but there hasn't been a raise in 14 years that I'm aware of.
That's what I thought. I had said 13, but you know, we do our best to keep our employees to go along with inflation and so this is just an opportunity. And once again, if we pass this opportunity, I'm good. Just wanted to bring it up. John, did you have any?
Just echoing what you said, this is, if you are going to consider it, this is the time. It wasn't included into the preliminary levy, but I believe we would have the capacity to handle that. It's, I doubt you would be so widely asking for such a wage. That would, that would impact the budget so dramatically that we can't fit it within what we have in the preliminary levy.
Well, I'd like to get my thoughts out there on that. And I, I would be willing to entertain maybe looking at mayor and potentially the council president. I just look back at the hours, for sure, the mayor was putting in when COVID hit, doing all the EDA work. There was a stretch of time, basically a, a full-time job. I'm not in favor of, you know, the regular ward representation of having that go up. I feel I'm compensated fairly for the amount of time I have to put in to be informed and interact with inquiries I get from the public. I didn't get into this because of the pay. In fact, I remained willfully ignorant to the pay when I first ran. I suspected there was pay, but I, I didn't know. And then when I was reviewing the city charter, you know, trying to get a feel for how city government worked, I stumbled across it and it was actually wrong in there. It was, it states in there less than what it is. But those are my thoughts. I, I, it's a hundred dollar increase right now for council president and mayor and I feel the time that they have to put in is considerably more than what I have to do with attending all the mayor's meetings and pretty much mayor's, attending probably 80% of the various, you know, commission meetings and stuff like that. So I, I would look at that, but I, I wouldn't be in favor of the council as a whole.
Well, and I wouldn't be in favor of just me. So if it's not the flavor for the council, I'm good with what I get paid.
What, what about people that are on these commissions?
That's a good point, Wayne.
Do you think they should get something? I mean, I had a meeting today with HPC and there's three that aren't on the council that are on that.
Yeah.
I think they should be awarded something or given something for being on a commission. They come every month.
I do. I agree.
We have a lot of people, so...
I realize that, but I mean, you don't have to give them a thousand dollars or $500, but just something for attending these meetings.
Yeah. Council President, that, that has come up in some of the regional conversations I've been in or statewide conversations. There are a number of communities that do give them some contribution. I've seen it $20 to $50 per, per meeting attendance, depending on those, those boards or commissions that they're part of. And segueing, if I may, to the next item, early, the, the budget meeting, I think if there's some ideas or considerations that you want, like put those down, bring that to the table, we'll, we'll set a, we'll set a topic and time to discuss that during the, the budget meeting, the special budget meeting that we have on the 24th.
If you could do some backwork and see the number of volunteers and potential, what it would cost. I'm not against it. In fact, I know of a lot of communities that pay the planning commission is one of them that to me is most prevalent, but I'm up for the discussion. I'm good with that.
Madam President, the way I look at it, as long as you divvy out the meetings or which groups were on equally... Madam President, the way I look at it, as long as you divvy out the meetings or which groups were on equally, I don't feel we need to be reimbursed. It's like Leif says, we can handle what we're doing, it's not, you know, there was a time I was on five committees, and maybe somebody else on the council was on one committee. And if it's a paid thing, we're going to start looking for more committees to, let's put me back on five committees, you know? But I think if we just keep it where we all have equal representation from the council on these committees, it's fine to leave it the way it is without compensating everyone.
Madam President, I don't think you were referring to us as council members. You were talking about the public that are on the.
The people that come.
Yeah, not, not us council.
I mean, I, not adding my.
24th, we talk about this, right? Because I, I think we're in, we can hammer out details. I think we're in agreement, it's a good, I mean, I've thought about this before. I brought it up to somebody, can't remember, I didn't keep pushing the issue. I'm glad you brought it up, Wayne, because I, I wholeheartedly agree. And then John mentioned something too that I agree with. And like I said, we can hammer out the details, and that is, it's attendance-based, not, not monthly, all right? You're, you're here, this is.
We have, we have plenty of committees that only meet four times a year, quarterly. So like even the, a monthly wouldn't make any sense for, for those boards. So I think there, there's definitely plenty of examples out there of communities that do it that way. And we'll come up with some ideas and options to, to discuss.
I'm in favor of that, and I don't even have to appoint people to sit on them. Find them, I guess, is the bigger part, right? The appointment is easy, it's finding somebody that'll do it, that's not so easy.
And the budget meeting is set for October 24th at 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Do you have anything to add to that? You've got five minutes to do so.
I just wanted to, to make that, make sure that that was announced to the, to the council and the community, that we, we have that. So we'll do some kind of updates from where we had, from finished with the preliminary levy conversation. Hopefully have some more final details. Certainly, the, one of the, one of the pieces has been on the lease. That's, that's kind of a big element in the budget that could be changed, dependent upon the decision of the council. That, and any other capital improvements. That was kind of the direction of, of staff, is make sure they were finding those capital requests.
Okay, any other, mayor, it looks like you've got a list there.
But they, do they play over here? They shut this road down and then play over here.
All right, in which case we will adjourn?
One more second. While we're in the work session here, just, just let everybody know about the copy with the cop on Thursday, October 6th, starting at 8:30. I think it's a great opportunity to get to know all the fine people that we have on our police force and see what they're doing and thank them.
I've attended those, and they're, they're good. I won't be able to be at this one. I'll be sitting out the woods, in the woods with a veteran out at Camp Ripley for the disabled veterans hunt, so. But I, if I was, and I know our son Shane, he's in Minneapolis. He, he said, boy, I wish they'd do something like that with Zoom, so I, I could be, attend that, so.
Oh, and I forgot about constituent messages. Any constituent messages?
I had a lady call me today. Her and her husband are in their 80s, and they've been having trouble with Spectrum. And Spectrum follow-through, they used to be with CTC, but then when CTC, that deal broke down. So they actually, the phone quit working, and it took them a week to get back to them to fix their phone. And these 80-year-old people had to walk down their stairs, because the guy told them to hook the phone up to the modem in the basement in the corner. So they had to listen for the phone to ring, run downstairs, run back upstairs. And when they got here today and fixed it, the internet went out. So now they don't have internet. So I told her I'd bring that forward. That's it.
I'd like to put in a plug for our administrator and engineer. There's a constituent who had a number of issues. And they met with him today, and they sat down, listened, and talked to him. And they're going to go back and deal with some things. But it's nice to see that they're working together, and they're actually willing to go meet people and.
Yeah.
I mean, just a nice little plug in there, and they did a good job with them, so.
Good.
Thank you for that. Anything else? All right, we have about five minutes till our council meeting at 7:30, so we will adjourn until then.